First is the consent agenda from Finance and Administrative Services.
Mr. Chair, the Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today and we had two items on the consent agenda. Those were the request authorization for the county executive to enter into an economic development investment program inter-local loan grant agreement between Watkin County and the port of Bellingham for the C Street terminal infrastructure rehabilitation project in the amount of a $2 million loan and a $1 million grant. This item was submitted to the committee and it was approved three to zero, and so I so moved that one. And the second item was the request authorization for the county executive to approve the purchase of a replacement front loader using the Washington State contract in the amount of $147,978.70, and that was approved two to one, and I so move.
All right, so we have both items on the consent agenda in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
I'd like to pull item two, please.
All right, so we're gonna pull number two. So number one is left. Any just buddy on that one? All right, so we have just item number one in front of us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now back to number two, which has already been moved for approval. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah. You know, this is for a second, i.e. backup front loader. And we have a front loader. It's got lots of hours on it, but it works. And it seems like for a backup, it's okay to use something that's a little less, you know, of all the bells and whistles than what we need as our initial first liner. And I really appreciated the presentation that was made, but I just feel like it's we don't need an expensive backup. And again, I'm gonna say what I said in committee, too. You know, my husband has had a front loader that was older, had lots of hours, and he would always work on it and always worked great. We have a whole department dedicated to keeping things running and in good shape. On top of that, you know, keeping that as the second, you know, second string, so to speak. On top of that, we also have people they brought up about snow problems, which is a joke this year, but we have so many people in the county when it's bad weather who are either in contact with the county and do it, or just do it, especially towards East County where usually the most snow is. But so I'm just not convinced that we need to spend this kind of money for, you know, a backup load a front loader.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe you may, Ms. Brenner, may have not seen the other email that was sent back afterwards after that meeting in which Public Works had pointed out that the second loader is actually used off-site for projects. So they have one in the yard and one doing Public Works projects. It's not a it's not a backup sitting there idle.
Mr. Mann?
I did not see that email either. I voted against it in committee for the reasons Ms. Brenner just pointed out. You know, when I asked him about why we couldn't have on-call private contractors, he said, well, they'd be sitting around doing nothing all day. And then so then the obvious question was, well, then why do we need two? And there wasn't really a great answer to that. Now now we're hearing that it's used off-site for projects. I did not read that, and I apologize, I missed that email. But this seems like a luxury, an expensive luxury, and I'm still not going to vote for it. I could be persuaded possibly if I saw the amount of hours, which is something we asked for, maybe that that was in their email today. But as of now, it just seems like an expensive luxury, and I did not think a strong case was made today for purchasing that item.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kremmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and maybe my brief respite. I didn't hear this factoid, but the committee was told by Mr. Schlechtuber that one of the main reasons for doing this, you know, for the request for this item is that the current or the one that they want to replace, the loader they want to replace, is obsolete. The parts are difficult to stock, and they would like to have two two pieces of machinery that have interchangeable parts, and they wouldn't have to stock two different kinds of parts. That was I think there's some merit to that to that argument or that rationale. I have some reservations, as do at least a couple of council members. I mean, it is it is I hate to put it in in those terms, being an expensive luxury, but you know, the fact is is that we would be able to get some some revenue by surplusing the, you know, the obsolete piece of machinery. And, you know, the county would be set for, you know, the foreseeable future by going forward with this request. And I I don't know if I'm totally convinced, but at least I'm giving the administration their, you know, their point and their side of the equation on this. But I think we as council members would not be doing our due diligence by questioning staff and the administration about a fairly significant expenditure. So, you know, I just wanted to get all that out before us, and then we can make whatever decision we think is appropriate.
Right. And I scanned very quickly the email that we got late this afternoon, and I think there was another piece of information in there. One, that it was not just sitting as backup at the yard and not doing anything, that it was out in the field, being used on other road projects, but also they managed to purchase it this time. They managed to get the the company they're purchasing it from to hold the last year's prices, so we're gonna save about $6,000 if we buy it now versus if we put it off. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I I understand, but I still feel that and even for the other things they said they were gonna use it for, that the one we have is perfectly capable of doing that at this point. And we were told the word backup came up. It wasn't like this just came out of thin air. So now there's other reasons, and they could do other things. Well, maybe they could, but I really do believe that we would need a lot more information. I saw they did send us I asked for the repairs and stuff that had been made and on the costs, and I didn't find any of that where it just, you know, it just stayed pretty steady through the whole time. So I didn't see that as a as a significant reason to do a replacement. And something Councilmember Kremmon said, oh, I know what it was. I also it was kinda maybe I wasn't asking it correctly, so it could have been my fault. But, you know, I I asked, you know, if we if we find that we're in a problem spot and we need some backup that we can't do, don't we have contracts with businesses to do that? And what he said first is, we have contracts to lease, that we can lease the equipment. And that wasn't my recollection. So I asked it another way, and maybe I did it better the second time, because I I said, don't we also have contracts with people who can do the work if we're in a, you know, an emergency or something? And my recollection was, he said, yes. I just I'm just not convinced at this point we need to I don't know if I call them luxury, but they sure are pretty cool, that we need to do it this way. And also, it I don't like just replacing something because of age, and I did not see anything in the in the, you know, columns that they sent us of all the monies that have been spent for what that jumped out at me that this thing is falling apart.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to move forward on purchasing a front-end loader for nearly $148,000. Any other discussion? Mr. Kremmon?
I hate to elongate this discussion any further, but I guess the executive's not here this evening, and maybe Mr. Schroeder can come and because I'm I'm really on the cusp here. I'm not totally convinced. I'd like to support the administration, having been in that position before. I, you know, I've worked with Public Works. They usually are not frivolous with their requests, but I'm not totally convinced either, and I I haven't counted the votes very closely, but I think that this thing could hang in the balance. So I want to be convinced why I should be supporting this request.
Well, Tyler Schroeder, Executive's Office, will see if I can convince members of the council to understand the importance of moving forward. And really, what I'll do is articulate what was discussed earlier today. This is a 1991 front loader that's being asked to be replaced. The council did move forward, I believe, last year and replaced the 1993 front loader with a similar model. And so this model would be of the similar type of John Deere 2015, which would allow to provide cost efficiencies and usability efficiencies in the future, because you can replace the components by using both, instead of trying to use a 2015 model and a 1991 model. And you'd have to stock twice as many parts, and you'd have to so that is one efficiency that it does provide. The other piece of information is that through the budgeting process, when we went through the ERNR late last year, this was on that list, and we did have some dialogue through that whole list in the ERNR. And it's interesting just to me to see that this was being brought forward early in 2015, which to me shows that Public Works saw the need to move forward with this, and it's likely because of what Councilmember Wymer indicated with the cost savings that we'll be able to get by moving forward, as well as the need from the Public Works. And I think you are correct, they usually do not bring forward requests to replace this large of an item without the understanding in the background to that component.
If I may continue very briefly, Mr. Chair. You may want to explain ERNR for those in the audience and maybe that are gonna be viewing this on television, what ERNR means, and maybe for the benefit of some of our newer council members as well.
So the Equipment Rental and Revolving Capital Equipment Budget Process, ERNR, Equipment Rental and Revolving. And so what it does is it looks at the existing capital and and equipment that the Watkin County has, recognizes when replacements are needed. And we have in the last few years looked at that process a lot more specifically and have looked at ways to save money as we move forward with replacing 24-year-old machines similar to this one. The other point that was discussed at committee was that the county has had two front loaders, I think, well, since 1993. And so we have had the ability to use this operation, which allows further operations at the shop, and and it has been in this place for 20 some odd years. And it seems reasonable to the administration to continue that, as well as the cost efficiencies and other efficiencies that this provides.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I appreciate the explanation, but that's kind of exactly what the problem is. We've always done it this way, we do it this way, and I've been told by someone at Public Works who's no longer there, and we're gonna be doing it this way long after you're gone. So I that's not, to me, a good reason, and this efficiency with the the parts that you it seems to me we could order extra parts of things that usually need to be replaced rather than having two huge expenditures so we can interchange parts. I just I think there's a better way to do it.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to approve this. Mr. Brown?
Let me just try and maybe help sway Mr. Kremmon a little bit. I think it'd be reasonable to assume that if we only have one of these devices, it's gonna wear out twice as quickly.
That's true.
So then we have to buy another one. So if our replacement cycle at the moment is we're replacing two of them every 25 years, I think you just find us replacing one every 12 and a half years. Keeping a device that is worn is not only gonna be consuming more parts, it's also gonna be consuming more labor just to maintain it. So there's gonna be less ongoing costs with a new machine than there is going to be with an old machine. And I would certainly rather see us have two machines of the same type, because it reduces the amount of spare parts, it reduces the training of the technicians, and it reduces the operator training as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, so now we have the motion in front of us. Anything else? Ms. Brenner?
Doesn't the county ever just purchase spare parts when they purchase equipment so that they have spare parts? I mean, I just know as individually, we always do that. I just it seems.
I think what we were told is they do have spare parts, but if they have two of the same vehicles, they buy one spare part, and they can use it on either vehicle instead of having to buy different spare parts for different vehicles.
I get that, but they could still buy the spare parts and then be able to use them on that vehicle when they need it on that vehicle. I'm not convinced that it means we'd have half the usable time out of it. And I just feel like, I don't know, we need more specifics if we're even gonna consider it.
All right, we've got the motion in front of us, seen no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that passes four to two with Councilmembers Brenner and Mann opposed. Natural Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had one item today, and that was the consideration of a resolution providing guidance to the planning unit in the WIRE One process. We the the resolution that we reviewed today had information regarding re-engagement documentation on how the the planning unit, when it's restarted in 2013, what documents that would be required to to validate the caucus various caucuses and memberships. We had a section on program review, which talked about the compliance program, low-impact development, natural resources policy integration, public involvement in education, water use efficiency, and review of WIRE One long-term monitoring, and also a review of the lower NICSAC strategy. We talked a little bit about resource needs, and we talked about the need for ongoing communication. The committee voted three to zero to recommend approval, and I so move.
All right, and there was one amendment to it, as I recall, that the committee recommended. We took out part of a paragraph.
Oh, yes, yes.
Under resource needs.
We.
I think there was some mention that if the planning unit thought they needed more money, they should come to us.
Right, we we deleted that.
All right.
Last sentence in the second paragraph.
What page?
Page five of our packet.
Okay, yeah, page five.
The sentence beginning with "the council cannot unilaterally." That sentence was the amendment struck that.
Who is that? Okay, where is it? Because that's the one I had a problem with, but I don't have it marked here. Page five. Oh, it's four, okay. It's page five up above, got it. Yep, here we go. Yes.
Ms. Brenner?
I move that we put that paragraph back in, and I'm gonna read it, and I feel like it adds a whole lot of intent and, I hope, reassurance to the public and to the planning unit. "The county the council cannot unilaterally appropriate more money outside of the normal budget process, but if a good case can be made for the need, we are certainly willing to engage the county executive in discussions to try to make that happen." I just I really like that paragraph, and you're right, it's probably not necessary, but I think it's a great paragraph to have in there, great sentence, rather.
So did you have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so you moved to reinsert that language.
Yep, reinsert.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All and Mr. Mann?
What was the I'm sorry, I missed the meeting this morning. Why did we take it out?
It was basically so that it wasn't an open-ended, you know, we have we have more money type of offer. So we're not offering, you know, that there's chances for more budget, that we're it certainly certainly left up to, you know, to discussion, but it was.
You made the amendment, right?
Yeah.
Maybe you could explain better than I can.
So my rationale for making the amendment is we've been funding the planning unit now for 20 months, and we've really been unable to get any productive work product project back. I was reluctant to have an open-ended thing for providing continuing funding until the planning unit demonstrated that they could actually find a way to govern themselves in a way that produced something we could use. I'm not against funding them in the future if they can if they're able to deliver on stuff, but I'd like to see them start delivering on some stuff.
And as the maker of the resolution, I went along with that deletion, just because I don't think it's all that important. If they think they need more money, I don't think they'll be shy about coming and asking. And also, one of the water districts pointed out that it's not completely accurate either, because a lot of the money for water things comes from the flood control zone district, which we actually can't appropriate without administrative approval. Ms. Brenner?
Well, and I don't mind adding that little clause in there, but what I like about it, I think this does say exactly what Councilmember Brown wants to have in here, but he doesn't want this. I think it says, you have to make a good case. To me, making a good case is give us some product. And in fairness to the planning unit, this this is not the first planning unit that's, you know, it's very diverse. It's not the first planning unit that's taken quite a bit of time to come up with final products. That's why I really like the resolution, because it's got bullet points of what we'd like to see. But I also think this should would really reassure everybody involved that, you know, we are willing to listen to you guys. I think it's not necessary, but it's really I think it's really helpful. So that's my motion.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to reinsert that language.
And add the language. We can always use we can also use money as the flood control board of supervisors, which wouldn't have to go to the executive.
I can't repeat that motion, so this is one that you're either gonna have to state better or forget it, or write it down.
I'll state it better. In that same sentence, engage the county executive when necessary. How's that? Two words, when necessary.
Okay, change the change it to when necessary.
In discussions, yeah, to try to make that happen.
Okay, so we have the motion to insert the old language along with that, add a tidbit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that fails five to one with Ms. Brenner in favor. Now we have the original motion as presented from the Natural Resource Committee. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Back to Finance.
Mr. Chair, there is an ordinance in Finance amending the 2015 Watkin County budget second request in the amount of $2,364,947 that was recommended with for approval with a vote of three to zero. Can I so move?
All right, so we have the motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seen none, or ready for the roll call?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Kremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, there was an ordinance discussed in Finance, Amendment Number One, amending ordinance 2013 dash zero six zero, establishing the Straight Street Building Acquisition and Improvement Fund and related capital budget appropriation. And that was voted on three to zero, and I so move.
All right, so we have that motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
I'm opposed to this for this. This is like, I think, number 24 of the project-specific funds that have happened since with the budget since the budget, when before these latest budget happenings, we barely had one or two per many years. And I do not like the idea that once we create a 30,000-foot view with a project-based budget that we don't get any look at it when whereas where the contracts go, who they go to, and yet it always falls on us when things screw up. So the contracts should be coming to us, and this is a lot of project-based budget funds, which really makes the council more and more obsolete, and it's less transparency for the public.
Mr. Brown?
I share the concern about having transparency on this process, and this issue came up at the last council meeting, and the county executive's office is in the process of preparing a proposal for us, which will be discussed, I think, at the next council meeting, which I would understand would be would govern any whatever we decide there is gonna govern any contracts that are actually initiated or up for approval for this project and others.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I'd like to remind council that Councilmember Wymer and I came up with a draft ordinance to take care of it, and even if you didn't like it, we could have passed that in the interim, especially if the county executive felt like he wanted to bring another project-based fund forward to us. I just feel like at some point, not only that, we don't even know what his proposal's gonna say, and I I really think we're giving up more and more of our charge, so.
Mr. Brown?
I I remember the proposed changes to the ordinance that Ms. Brenner is talking about, and I voted against it simply because it doesn't actually address the issue you're talking about. The the proposal didn't cover project-based budgeting, project-based funding. And and if you disagree, I would recommend you go back and look at the language.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I know for a fact it did, so.
All right, so we both can all can go back and look at the language.
You well you.
That's not what we're voting on right now.
Plus, you did it, too. You know, it didn't do just that, but it did do that. It took out that clause that gave the county executive the ability to move forward with.
Use your best brain, Ms. Brenner.
My best brain says I'm right.
Mr. Mann?
So I I agree with Ms. Brenner that I do wanna take a closer look at this the oversight in these project-based budgets. That's not gonna prevent me from approving this one. We've had great progress so far on on the project, on the first phase of the cleanup. I'm looking forward to getting the second part dialed in and figuring out exactly what we have to do, and then cleaning that one up down the road. So I'm not gonna just deny this one, but I agree, there is a bigger issue that we are gonna settle hopefully in the next couple of weeks. So but in the meantime, let's let's keep going on this important project.
Mr. Buchanan?
I would agree with what Mr. Mann said. I think I'm looking forward to the executive bringing forward a proposal in two weeks and for us to be able to review that and have a discussion. And I agree that we shouldn't hold this up, because this this is a necessary project for our county, so.
Ms. Brenner?
There would be another way to do this. We could do it without creating a project-based budget fund. We could he could just bring it forward, the which we've done many times with other projects, and we would approve it in concept, and then the contracts would come to us. So we could just delete the part about setting up a project-based budget fund, and we could still vote to approve it.
No motion there, I don't think, so.
That's my motion. My motion is to to amend, to remove this item as a project-based budget fund and just vote on it as.
I think that's out of order, because we've already made it a project-based budget. That's not what's.
No, this is a new fund. It says it didn't say it was an adding to it. It said it's a new one, isn't it? Oh, it's adding to it, okay. So we couldn't why can't we take it out of the fund and just do it legally? Karen?
Is there anybody that wants to entertain that?
This is a good example of.
Will we need a second?
What we were talking about this morning. I I I mean, this is not.
That's not fair. Okay, but it's an interesting issue. Why shouldn't we explore it? No, because nobody cares what we. Okay, I'm done.
You wanna see if you can get a second on that?
I'm done.
Mr. Kremmon?
I just had a question for the administration, and that is, weren't there contingencies built into the original contract? Or the original budget budgeting process? I mean, usually they put in a I mean, unless things have changed. I mean, usually, they put in a, I mean, unless things have changed, we generally build in a 10% contingency for any project of this magnitude.
My understanding, there was contingencies. This $400,000 for the soil remediation was discussed with council when we purchased the property, and it's just the paperwork to accomplish that funding source into the project fund budget.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the motion to approve this in front of us. I think we're ready for the roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
So, that passes five to one with Ms. Brenner opposed. And back to, uh, the planning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you should all have a purple substitute replacement pages. This is a resolution initiating the proposed Watcom County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments, AB 2015-085, also known as docketing for the upcoming year. You should note that I'm going to move approval, or that, of the resolution of the substitute replacement pages, because it removes what was originally item number one, because that is related to Rover Stayover, which is the subject of a hearing examiner appeal. We didn't wanna appear to be displaying any bias or prejudice. We have to resolve the hearing examiner appeal before we can vote yea or nay on the docketing. So, we have for you the substitute version, everything as it was in the packet, except item number one, and I move approval.
All right, it's my understanding that that, that, that other one that we're removing will be coming back to us at some point later this year, maybe.
Uh, Mark Presoni is Planning Development Services. That's true. I think we have it, I've been told it's scheduled for April 28th. The item I have for you is, councilors to consider, would you please consider adding to the motion waiving the fee for the Point Roberts Character Plan Amendment, which is the only comp plan amendment that's on the docket. It's PLN 2015-00004. We just didn't, we forgot to include that at the council, or at the...
It already says yes on the thing. Oh, that's about...
They're requesting it, yes or no, and yes, they're requesting it, and you have to specifically grant it.
I thought we did.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
So, somebody wanna make a motion, or add that to your motion, since we already have a motion on the table?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know...
Or someone can move to amend your motion.
Yeah, let somebody else...
I'll move to amend the motion to waive the fee for the Point Roberts Towers.
The Character Plan?
Character Plan, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, we call it Character Plan. Sorry. But I have a question for Mark. I thought we waived that already. I thought back when it was proposed...
This is the proposal.
Yeah, but we had a discussion about it, and I thought, didn't either one of the council members or somebody say they would introduce it as, instead of...
Sounds like we don't have a record of it, and it certainly won't...
Not on this one, no. 'Cause this one, this one we just got.
All right.
What would the, what is the fee, and what criteria is used to evaluate whether it should be waived?
Uh, we, we discussed that in the committee.
Today?
Yeah. The criteria for...
We discussed it today in my committee?
This is a comp plan amendment.
I don't think so.
No, we just discussed it today.
Uh, yeah, I think Matt went over this. If there were any city comments, if it was within a UGA, which is not, 'cause it's Point Roberts, does the amendment relate to designated ag, forestry, or mineral lands? There are none of those in Point Roberts. Whether the county has set a future date for examining the area of the issue, we have not. And whether PDS, what PDS's work plan workload is.
They can't hear?
I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry.
Wait, so that's the criteria for determining...
For you to consider a comprehensive...
Whether or not to waive it?
Yes.
And what would, what are the fees? Did you...
$8,660.
Whoa. All right, so Mr. Reber has requested that that fee be waived, and that's the motion, the amended motion that Ms. Brenner made to waive the fee. Any discussion? Mr. Brown?
Well, given that the amendment is dealing with the character plan for the entire community, and it's not, I don't see this directly benefiting, benefiting any enterprise or individual, but rather, it's the result of a volunteer effort to just try and update it, I would support it.
Ms. Brenner?
Plus, those are the kind of issues that we do propose for comp plan amendments when they're area-wide, rather, because that's, it's supposed to be about the public good, rather than an individual. And, yeah, I think this fits pretty well.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to amend to waive that fee. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now, we have the motion to initiate all of these amendments. Mr. Brown?
Just on clarity here, on the, on the one for co-deforestation amendments and the broadcast tower height, do they attract a fee that we have to consider waiving, or is it just not applicable? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, we have the motion in front of us. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We are on to council appointments to boards, and we have an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Surface Mining Advisory Committee, Surface Mining Material User Representative, and the applicant is Kyle Stringhold. Is there a motion?
I'll so move.
Ms. Brenner has moved to...
Oh, no, I move. I'm not so moved, I'll move.
Ms. Brenner has moved to appoint Mr. Stringhold. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. And now, we have an executive appointment. It requests confirmation of the county executive's reappointment of Richard Yoder to the Watcom County Agricultural Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I move that we do so.
Okay, Mr. Brown has moved to confirm Mr. Yoder. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And now, we're on to the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
We can't do it.
We can't do, 'cause we held, okay? And at some point, since we didn't set any dates for the MRL, when do we get in trouble for dragging this out?
My understanding is that this has happened before, and so there is, there is no set time limit on it. You just have once a year, so we'll, we'll, we'll try to schedule that Surface Mining Advisory Committee meeting as quickly as we can, and invite council members to come and, and have that conversation, so.
Great. All right, so we're gonna hold on to all of these until we deal with the MRL one. Ms. Brenner?
One quick question, I think...
You have to do them concurrently.
Gotcha.
Okay. Mr. Buchanan has moved acceptance. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. Any other committee reports? Anything else from any of the committees?
Mr. Chair, I distributed a letter here.
Is that from a committee?
No, sorry.
All right, we're just trying to do committee reports. Nothing else from planning or natural resources, or...
Well, I have something from Public Works. It wasn't in committee, but there's no one here from, well, maybe Tyler, you could... That, that double small roundabout on Slater at the freeway there, at both sides of the freeway, is, the paint is actually getting duller and duller, and they have not done the painting that was supposed to happen. I think it's dangerous. I still have a lot of times when I'm on it, and I'm in the thing itself, and I'm turning to come into town from the north, there are people coming east, from the, from the west on Slater that cut me right off, because to them, it looks like they just can turn. It's pretty scary.
Tyler Schroeder, Executive's Office. My understanding is that they had done the painting of those, but maybe not, so I will check in with the interim director, Joe Rutan, and give council an update on that.
Thank you.
All right, now, other items. Mr. Brown?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I distributed earlier a copy of a letter that I would like to propose that the council sends to the members of the 40th Legislative District Delegation. I'd actually like to amend this to be the 40th and the 42nd District Delegation. The matter regards the program for Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, which apparently has proven quite successful at diverting juveniles from ending up in our prison system or jail system. I, I like it for several reasons. One is, you know, anything we can do to, to nip errant behavior in the bud and get a kid on the right track, I support. From a social perspective and from a fiscal perspective, it's obviously a lot cheaper if we can intervene early and get these kids to, to change their path. So, this is a recommendation or request that had come from Sheriff Elfo, attached to the back as details of the program. Watcom County is one of 10 counties that is doing this, and they're, the sheriff in particular is looking for us to, to retain the funding to do it. So, my motion is to, that we approve this letter.
All right, so the motion's to send this letter from the council to both the 40th and the 42nd District Legislative Delegation. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll get that out tomorrow. Other items? Any other items? About update, I think we need to change this agenda.
Yeah, it's so confusing to say that.
Other items or updates, we never know which one we're on. So, anything, does anybody have anything else? Mr. Mann?
Well, I was out in the East County today, or not today, on Sunday, and just talking with folks about the weather, actually, and the lack of snow. And it's a big deal. I was out in Glacier, and I was up on Mount Baker, and there's very little snow up there. One of the longstanding restaurants in Glacier has had to shut its doors. You know, there's a lot of other jobs that are dependent on that, and I was just getting a feel for that out there. And people also brought up, you know, the rafting guides in the summer, and now there's probably gonna be really low flows in the river for, for those recreational opportunities and those jobs. And we started talking about forest fire potential and salmon issues with the low flows, and who knows? I, I don't know how much it affects wells or irrigation and farms and things like that, but having very little snow and then the subsequent lack of a snow melt is gonna have big impacts, not just for the ski season, but through the whole year round. And I just, I wanted to bring it out and, bring it up, and just as a, sort of let those folks know we're thinking about them, and let just everyone else know that it is a big deal.
Is there a motion?
No, it's just an update for your edification.
An update is good.
Move to end global warming.
Yeah.
Mr. Cremmon, anything?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's, it's nice to be culminating our, our meeting today in a relatively civilized hour. So, I, I do have a somewhat extensive report, a couple of reports. The executive and Councilmember Brown, and former council member Crawford and myself went to Washington, DC. We did have the opportunity to listen to the Vice President, who addressed the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in Washington, DC. And he had a pretty poignant message saying that, first of all, I wanna give you the perspective. He's a former county official. He started out in county government. He understands the, you know, the adversities and the, the burdens that are put upon county governments throughout the country. And that's very much appreciated from both Democrats and Republicans alike. And that fact is, is acknowledged from, from both sides of the aisle. And his big message was that this country is, in spite of the fact, is, is starting to recover from the economic meltdown that we had. It was the most severe economic crisis the country's faced since the Great Depression. And he, and the administration are very concerned about the, the fact that middle America and those less fortunate are not participating in the recovery nearly as much as the, you know, the top 1%. And, and the administration is, wants all the counties to know that it makes it very difficult for counties throughout the country to, to deal with these, you know, the fact that the less fortunate and middle America is not participating in, in the recovery from, from the economic meltdown, and it puts more burdens on local government, especially counties. So, that was one thing. We did meet with a couple of members from our congressional delegation. We had a very long meeting with, ran about 45-minute meeting with Senator Cantwell, and it was a very productive meeting. We also had an opportunity to, to meet with the staff and with Congresswoman Kathy McMorris Rogers, who, you know, I, I did serve with as well as Senator Cantwell when I was in the legislature. And one of the things that I was very impressed with Congresswoman McMorris Rogers is that she is really trying to influence the Speaker, primarily Speaker Boehner, to support the Secure Rural Schools Program, which has a major impact here in Watcom County. We're one of the larger recipients in the entire state. I think we're second or third in the, the amount of money that we receive for, for that program. And the Speaker is, he thinks that he categorizes it, characterizes it as welfare, welfare for the West, and that's just not the case. You know, it just so happens that the East, there isn't that much federal land, but there is a lot in, in, in the Western United States where there's more vast amounts of, of undeveloped land. There are some counties that are actually 96% federally-owned land. And if we don't, we don't get that program continued, there's gonna be a lot of pain, financial pain, and, and a, another increasing of a burden on counties which are already beleaguered to begin with. And so, Representative McMorris Rogers was very supportive. I was very pleased with the fact that she, first of all, took the time out of her busy schedule. She's in leadership, she's the majority whip, and she plays a very important role and does have influence, and hopefully, she'll be able to use that influence to have a positive outcome with the, with the Speaker. So, that's my report from Naco. Maybe Councilmember Brown wants to expound on, on what, what I've already said. But I, there's an important meeting tomorrow and on Thursday in Olympia that I'm gonna be attending, representing Watcom County as a member of the Legislative Steering Committee. And tomorrow, there's a hearing that has just been called for, and it's gonna be taking place tomorrow evening at six o'clock, and it's the, the House's proposal on sharing marijuana revenue. It's, it's Substitute House Bill 2136. And that bill has been vastly changed from what the county originally wanted. Specifically, the House, in their current version, has it so that counties do not get a penny of revenue, no shared revenue, for the first $25 million collected. It would all go to the state, and that's just not right. And, you know, it's, especially in the infancy stage of, of, of this marijuana industry that we have, it was the counties that had to, as you well know, it was the counties who had to spend time and efforts with their, their planning and development services departments, the health departments, the legal staff, the actual legislative actions that needed to be taken. All that, all that was borne by the counties. And we're, I haven't even gotten into the, the criminal side of things. And, and it's just not right for, in my opinion, and the opinion of every single county, whether they're from Eastern Washington or Western Washington, there is solidarity among all the counties, and we're gonna be... there is solidarity among all the counties, and we're gonna be showing up, and I will be representing Waccaum County at the hearing tomorrow, to let the legislators know that they need to be a little more equitable in the way they share the revenue from, from the proceeds from, from the sale of marijuana. So I will be down there carrying the flag for, for Waccaum County, not just on this issue, other issues as well, but there's a lot of work to be done, and if you have any influence with some of the, you know, legislators from the 40th and 42nd District, I suggest you, you use that influence because there's a real possibility that the legislature may just go ahead and, and pass that bill and take all the money. You know, I want to put in context the reason that they're using and they're, they're citing of, of why they're being so stingy and hoarding all the money that is generated from, from marijuana. By the way, it's not as much as you think so far. I mean, the fir, we're not even close to twenty-five million dollars, and we're talking about single digits in millions, not twenty-five million. And that would mean that the counties and cities would not get anything. But the reason they, they are taking this position is that they're, you know, not in compliance with, well, with the, with the Supreme Court. I mean, there's been a court decision where the state of Washington is not in compliance and with the McCleary decision, they're not funding basic education, and they're, they're using that rationale for the reason why they're not gonna share any revenue from, from proceeds of marijuana, which I, you know, they dug that hole, and they haven't economized nearly as much as, as, as counties have. Counties and cities as well, I think counties universally have cut their budgets by fifteen percent. The state of Washington has cut their budget about five percent. And so I, I would ask you to contact your legislators and bring that, that fact to their attention, and that they need to whittle down their budget before they, you know, hoard all the, the proceeds from any revenue, but especially marijuana, when there's so much obligations and, and work and staff time that goes into setting up the whole system so they can generate money that would all go to the state. So I, I, I'll get off my soapbox, but I want you to know that I'm gonna work very hard and diligently and use whatever contacts and influences that I have in Olympia to, to drive that point home in a, in a respectful manner, but firm.
What's the number of that bill?
It's Twenty-One Thirty-Six.
Okay. Substitute House Bill Twenty-One Thirty-Six. Substitute House Bill Twenty-One Thirty-Six. Thank you, Mr. Kremmon, that's good. All right, thank you, Mr. Kremmon. Ms. Brenner?
Well, first I have a question. Would it be helpful if we just take a vote right now so we can unanimously support you on this? Would that-
You can do anything.
Okay.
You know, give me a note, tie a ribbon around my finger.
No, no. I move unanimously support Councilmember Kremmon's comments down regarding funding for the county associated with marijuana. That's my motion.
I second that. All right, you got a second?
Oh, would you stop?
Any other discussion?
And I'll throw it if I actually understand exactly what the motion is.
All right, all in favor of giving Mr. Kremmon those marching orders, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, in spite of the, and by the way, I really appreciate Councilmember Brenner's motion to, to, to support the county's efforts, but I, that shouldn't preclude you from personally contacting our, our state representatives and senators because it, it really, I think, goes a long way when you individually take the time to call or email them and let them know that you are, you didn't just willy-nilly pass something, you know, at a council meeting and then it's all done with. Let them know how important it is from you, each and every one of you individually, because it, it does make a difference when you're in Olympia and the legislators are personally contacted by us. I, it certainly has a lot of impact, it had a lot of impact with me when I was in the legislature, and I think that holds true for our current legislators as well.
Is that Substitute Senate?
Substitute House Bill Twenty-One Thirty-Six.
Twenty-One Thirty-Six, if I can read my writing. Okay.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
I'm gonna change the mood and make it a little more positive. We had a long break, so I got a few things, and I'll say them real quick. I had the wonderful opportunity to judge the, the four H presentations. We have amazing four H kids in Waccaum County. Most of their presentations are probably on par or better than anything we do, and I learned a lot about different agricultural, things like shearing. I thought I knew a lot about shearing, but I didn't. So it's just, if anybody gets an opportunity to, to judge the four H presentations, these were, some of them were super little kids talking like adults. I mean, they just had all their facts, they had beautiful, you know, murals and stuff that they presented with them. That was something that was extremely exciting, and I loved it. When Jim Cosette stood up, he spoke about that, that packet from the League of Women Voters about economic insecurity. We got a copy of that, it's an incredibly interesting packet, and there was a presentation on the twenty-first that, it not only was a great presentation on the packet itself, but a lot of people added to it, so if, if you guys can find that back in your stuff, it's definitely worth reading. I thought it was extremely helpful. The Drayton Harbor Oyster House, is that what they call themselves, has opened in, in Blaine, and it, it was a great opening, and I'm so glad there's gonna be oysters that are gonna be readily available, and Steve Seymour and his family are doing an incredible job with that. And definitely last but not least, I also, and, and the executive, Executive Laos was there too, we were able to give awards for the Waccaum County Middle School Math Championship Awards Ceremony. It was at the Blaine Heights Gymnasium, and imagine, if you will, a gymnasium completely filled with kids on a sunny Saturday afternoon who are cheering and screaming and so excited, even when they didn't win and some other teams won, they were, they screamed for them too. It was so, I've never seen so many kids so packed in, and it was about math. That's very exciting for the future of Waccaum County and for this country. So that's sponsored by Phillips Sixty-Six. I mean, it's one of the things they do, and it's one of my favorite events to be at, and so I hope other council members will maybe in the future do that, it's really fun.
All right.
I mean, it's hard to keep a straight face, it's so much fun.
Mr. Mann?
I reported, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Buchanan? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to also comment that I, as Mr. Kremmon said, I was also at the NACO conference. It was my first time there, and frankly, it exceeded, succeeded my expectations. It was very, I wanted to thank Mr. Kremmon and Mr. Crawford, both of whom were very helpful in navigating the process of bringing up the right issues with each of our federally elected officials. I know there was some criticism of Mr. Crawford continuing to go, even though he's retiring, and I felt in hindsight, well, I didn't think it was appropriate criticism at the time. Having gone with him, I think it was definitely inappropriate, he added a lot of value, was very knowledgeable on issues that were very important to us, and I, and I appreciated, appreciated having him in the room. I, there were several presentations given at NACO, and, and I ended up choosing ones that were focused on two, two broad themes. One was cybersecurity, which is becoming a real issue in the government, local governments, city, state, county governments, and it's unfortunately something we're gonna have to give a lot more attention to. And the other one was alternative approaches to dealing with justice, particularly incarceration and juveniles, and there was, I was really struck by, NACO has a, a position paper on several topics which I will share with you. I think I've got copies for everybody, I just neglected to bring them tonight. I personally found I agreed with all of them, I agreed with all of them a hun, five of them, all but one a hundred percent, and the last one, I agree with fifty percent. And that was an injustice issue, it was about the collection of sales taxes for out-of-state sales on the internet. And I don't disagree with the principle, I actually agree with the principle, I disagree with the way I think they, they're trying to implement it, and I'm going to work with NACO to, to make them aware of some of the problems that are associated with implementation. But I appreciate the opportunity, I think it was great value for, for the council members and the executive, and I think it was frankly great valuable, value, subsequently great value for the citizens as well, to have this attend.
All right, thank you. Just to bring up the rear, I just wanted to point out that the Lake Waccaum Policy Group had their meeting last week in the evening so we could take public testimony, and what was unveiled at that was the next Lake Waccaum five-year work plan. So I think everybody got a copy via the email, if you didn't, I'll certainly be glad to send it. Ms. Brenner was there listening too. I think they did a really good job of unveiling it this year, and the report is much more concise than it's been in the past for kind of what's being worked on there and what the, what the measurables are. They did hear a little bit from council members and the public about not doing enough public outreach and involvement, and, and the idea of a report back dashboard came up multiple times too, so people know what we are doing and how we're, how we're doing that. So I thought that was a good meeting. And the last thing I just wanted to let the council know about is we've been approached by, recently by a nonprofit, but it brings up an issue that we talked about during the budget sys, budget discussions, a nonprofit wanted to come and give us a presentation at their evening meeting, so we knew what they were doing.
Oh, right.
We were a little hesitant to open up that floodgate because if we do it for one, there's lots of them, but the idea came up that maybe we could start sprinkling some of the nonprofits into our committee meetings during the day, like we were doing for businesses in the Finance Committee. So I'll, I'll, I'll get in touch with the committee chairs and when there's one that may be appropriate, because I think the different nonprofits might fit in different committees, unless the council has a different idea of how they wanna do that, you know. It's pretty, you know, our meetings go long enough without having a nonprofit talking at us for fifteen minutes at every meeting. Mr. Brown?
So I think the, the current program of listening, having presentations from three businesses, I think it's once a quarter, that are both, you know, vetted for, you know, the fact that they're a county business, et cetera. I think that's a productive exercise that allows us to, to have a better understanding of the business community, but it's not overwhelming. I think, I think your idea is great, I think we just need to establish a filtering mechanism and some sort of qualifying criteria, because it might be someone who's a single person operating a charity or someone like the, you know, say like the food bank, it's a completely different spectrum, so.
Correct, and I, I know during the budget discussions, we talked about how do we start hearing from the nonprofits before we get to the budget cycle, the folks that perhaps we funded for, either are currently funding or have funded in the past, so we can kind of keep track of what they're up to, so. All right, any other business for the good of the order? See none, we're adjourned.